To order. As you can see, this meeting is being held in person and it can also be viewed on local cable, channel thirteen oh three or on the internet by accessing the town website at bucksportmain.gov, clicking on watch meetings and selecting town council. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. As I usually do, I will remind you that this is a great time to turn your cell phones to silent. I will remind you that if you are going to speak during any of the public's comment sections, and there will be a number of them, to please come to the podium and state your name and if, and your address or town you're from. And lastly, I've had the opportunity to watch several recorded meetings lately with our new audio system, and here is my advice. No matter where you are sitting in this room, if you say something out loud, it is going to be heard. So if you don't want anything you say to not be broadcast over channel thirteen oh three or the internet, don't say it. My only advice. Next is call of the roll, George.
Deputy Mayor Mark Eastman, here. Councilor Jennifer Tarian, here. Councilor Tracy Hare, here. Mayor Paul Bissonnet, here. Councilor Paul Rattles, here. Councilor Steve Bishop, here. Councilor Ed Rankin, here.
Next is presentation of any town council recognitions, and the first we do have one is a moment of silence in remembrance of Don Houghton, publisher of the Bucksport Enterprise. On behalf of the council, I would like to acknowledge the passing of Don. I knew Don personally. I was first elected to the Bucksport Town Council in the year two thousand, and shortly after that, he took over the enterprise, excuse me, the Bucksport School Board in two thousand, when my hair was all the same color. And I've just, I've thought a lot about what I was gonna say for Don this evening, and I will say this, because we'll keep it real. There were times I was exasperated with Don beyond belief. There were times that I really appreciated what Don did for this community. We were very, very fortunate to have somebody capture what was going on in Bucksport for as long as Don did, especially through his illness and just the fact that he was able to keep, him and Sandy have been able to keep a local paper like the Enterprise going for as long as they have, is truly admirable. So unless anybody else on the council has something to say, I would like to observe a moment of, oh, Steve, please.
I'd just like to say that Don, throughout my entire life, has always owned and operated that paper since I was an adult, and he's written about everything in my life, from high school to police work and the fire department, and he's, he's always been, he's always been there to write about what's happening here in Bucksport. So as we move forward, it'll be interesting to, to see what happens, but it'll be an adjustment for the, for the news for me. So I don't, I don't know of any news in Bucksport without, so.
Thank you, Council Bishop. Anyone else? Thank you. Please, a moment of silence for Don. Thank you, everyone. Next is consideration of minutes from our previous meeting included with your packets was the minutes from our meeting on February the twenty seventh. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Questions or comments? How would the council like to proceed?
Would you approve?
Second.
All's in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, receiving review correspondence. The first is, we have a police call, a Rhode Island police call from February the twenty third. From February of twenty twenty five, we have the departmental reports that were included in your packet. And lastly, we have the Down East Transportation Ridership Report for February as well. Any questions on any of those? You do not have any ordinances to consider or introduce this evening. We have a number of discussion items. The first is a dam update.
I, I keep thinking of phrasing that differently, but I can't make myself do it. So we're in the process of reviewing the eight hundred or so pages of information that we've received and identifying the holes, the missing pieces that are part of that. At your next meeting, I'll be bringing you a resolution asking your permission to negotiate with Bucksport Main Water and Bucksport Generation in regard to a solution for the, this issue potentially. Our attorney is preparing that. But beyond that, we're, we're still going through preparing the next request to Bucksport Mills for the additional information that has not yet been provided. The five towns our group is, is considering asking for an overall meeting with Bucksport Generation, Main Water, as well as the engineering firm representatives that prepared the cost estimates that are included in the information that we received. Still up in the air as to whether that's going to happen or not. They do have a meeting with Main Water scheduled for the first week of April to talk to them. I believe it's important that Main Water and Bucksport Generation get to the table along with the town in a timely way. We're trying to encourage that. As I think I reported last time, we had a, we had a very good meeting with the DEP Commissioner and assorted staff from the AG's office and her office, just in terms of process, sort of the what comes next piece. And that's where we are at the moment. The, the October thirteenth deadline is for some sort of a proposal. Either the town wishes to do something or doesn't, but, but October thirteenth is that deadline by which we have to either have received all the information that we need and been able to come to some sort of proposal, or after Bucksport Mills submits their report on consultation phase, responding to say that it was unsuccessful because we didn't get what we needed in order to be able to do that. So that's where we are in the process at the moment. Bills are still working their way through the legislature in support of some of the items that primarily relate to the other four communities for the formation of a quasi-municipal district for the ownership.
Would there be an advantage to public, like a, is there a public hearing for those bills? Could the town write a letter of support to the public hearing perhaps?
Yes, the language for the quasi-municipality just got submitted, and it's not back yet. So when that comes out of the reviser's office, I will let everyone know, and we'll have a, we'll have a date. I'll make sure everybody knows when, have dates for the different bills.
Great. Questions for the town manager?
It did, the, the information is posted on the town's website of all the pages that we got. I posted that for the public. It's on our website under the information about dams, not the dam information. The information about dams section on that front page, it's there. Both the letter from the attorney and the packet itself of stuff.
Comments from the public on dams? Next will be landfill update.
I don't have one. Well, I shouldn't say I don't have one. I don't have any new news that I haven't told you before. They're in an evaluation phase, the last of the information requested for the closure plan is supposed to be submitted by April. There are now two people working on it because the person who was the contact retired, and there's, the last time I spoke to Stacy, she said she was being assisted by another person in the department in this process, and that's where they were.
Questions from the council on that? From the public? Next is American Legion Post ninety-three has a request for approval to display American flags on Main Street. And I believe we have some folks from the American Legion here this evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Most of you know me, but if most of you don't, my name is Greg Forsyth. I'm representing American Legion's Knight, Post ninety-three of Bucksport. Would you like me to state the proposal? Each of you have a copy, I can state it for the record, or?
You go through the, the main points if you'd like, and then we'll make sure.
Okay. So this initiative was started by my wife Joanna Forsyth. She is doing an advanced EMT class, and she's required to do eight hours of leadership. So she came up with this idea and presented it to the American Legion, of which I am a member, and we, we've been working together to generate this plan. What we've, what we'd like to do is solicit donations one time or annually from local businesses to generate the funds to purchase and install the flags up down Main Street. I know, we know that this was done in the past, and they were discontinued for a matter of flag presentation as well as manpower costs to maintain that. American Legion wants to pick that aspect up to fund the sourcing, to do the installation, and removing out the flags during those times that could be appropriate. There'd be no cost to the town at all. I've consulted with Richard Tella, who has a place to store the flags. American Legion wouldn't maintain ownership of the flags, we'd be looking for the town of Bucksport to maintain the ownership of the flags, the details of which we could work out if you guys were okay with doing this. And if you have any questions.
Do you have procedural questions from the administrative end?
Did, your presentation said, your information said you contacted CMP and there was no problem in installing them. I didn't ask Rich if there was any conflict within, is there anything that we post on those polls that would conflict with what they're, where they're looking to put things? Because I don't know the answer to the question.
There's not, when I consulted with Greg and Joanna, they had discussed about putting the flag holders opposite of the hanging baskets. That way the hanging baskets didn't drip down and deface the flags. So that would be different than other proposals we have received in the past of just using what was there, because there are some.
That's, that was.
I, I, I did take a drive up Main Street as well, and from what I could tell, the existing flag pole holders are actually above the pot holders. So it could, and feasible just to put the, the flags where they were before above the pot holders, so there wouldn't be that concern.
Well, the, the concern was that they get tangled up in the things that are already hanging on the pole. If they're, if they're right over the pots, they get wound around things, you know, that that, and the making sure that that isn't, and then the, the other thing is addressing appropriate lighting because they, that.
That was, that, that concern was ritual, I mean, that was one of the concerns. I did do some research on that. And as long as we have lighting from another source, it doesn't need to be directly on the flag, it's just at night, you need to be able to see the flag. So if there's light from a nearby streetlight that illuminates enough for you to see it, that's all that is required.
And then the only other question is how many, are we talking on every pole or every?
We, we, we are envisioning the, the poles on the bayside or on this side of the street between the sewage pump building and the credit union. There are twenty-five poles there. I don't think every pole will necessarily be able to mount something there due to, you know, some of them have the service entrances going underground that would prohibit that, but up to about twenty-five on this side.
Well, it, it, like I said, the, the, this proposal is different. We, we had a proposal a few years ago, I, I don't know how many years, I say a few, I've been here ten, it could have been nine, but that was more for the town to do this, and, and adding that wasn't, the, the council didn't vote to do it at that time, to take on that additional expense, and, and there were people, some people who came who questioned the use of the flag as a decoration as opposed to, because there's a, a significant flag display there and another significant flag display at Flagpoint that, you know, that making sure that the flag was the flag and not a decoration, if you get the, the difference. That was, I'm, I'm not advocating, I'm just repeating what the discussion was the last time this issue was raised. It was, it was causing concern over the flags getting hung up or not looking good, should we say?
We have made plans for that as well. The, the flags we're looking at getting are, the mounting of the flag to the pole has a free spinning mount, so that they won't, the flags would not get wound up on the pole as easily. We're looking at doing a higher quality flags. We're not gonna go and get, you know, twenty-five dollar flags from wherever, where, where the, in there, I've got three different places we could get them from, and the prices range dramatically, and the cheapest being around seventy-five dollars per kit, or seventy-nine, seventy-nine dollars per kit. The prices went up when we first looked at it. So, and they go up to almost two hundred dollars per kit. So there's, these are all, by the way, if it matters to anybody, these are all American-made sources. So that's, one of the key things that we were looking for is that they were sourced in America.
I make a motion to approve with a, call it an amendment, that our town administration work with the Legion for any specifics that come up in regards to a poll-by-poll basis to make it happen.
I'll second that motion. Move and second it. Questions? Comments? All's in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Absolutely, all right. Next, we have Colt. I hope, please, I have one of those names that people mispronounce, so correct me if I'm wrong. Colt, is it Slate?
That's correct.
All right. Initial request for contract zone for two cannabis establishments.
Hi, my name is Colt Slate. I am a resident of Hamden, just up the road from you guys. I'm looking at purchasing the Bucksport Car Wash, which is map twenty-seven, lot seven, or thirty-six, State Road forty-six. I would like to take the furthest, if you're facing the property, the furthest left most bay was an automated car wash bay. I'd like to subdivide that in half, so there's a adult-use store on the back and a medical store on the front. I would bring the two existing U-Wash bays into service again, and, yeah. As far as negative impacts, I wasn't around when the town crafted its ordinances, so I don't know why you chose to have cannabis in C-one and not in C-two. I don't know, anyone could speak to that?
A lot of it has to do with the butters. The property you're speaking of specifically, both the butters have already reached out to me, and they do not support that. A lot of the decisions that we make in regards to zone chaining or changing have to do with a butter contention. So if a butters for any particular project don't oppose, oftentimes we work with everyone to make things happen, but when they often do oppose, that creates substantial roadblocks to any zone changing.
Are the butters in the room today?
They are not.
Do you have some sort of record of their reservations or their?
Well, at this point, I don't need to, I can advocate for them, but if we go to any sort of a more of a public hearing process on it, then.
Okay, wonderful, yeah. I mean, you know, the democratic process is such that people are entitled to, and I, I would like to, you know, have a chance to sort of state my case with them and, you know, see if we can come to a compromise or if there's any room for common understanding. I think it would be nice to breathe some life into that part of Bucksport. I mean, it's a lovely town, and I, I think that for locals, at least in the summertime, it might be a relief to have something that's not on the main highway.
What's the next step from here?
The decision for the council tonight on any proposed zone changes, you refer it to regulatory, you would refer it if you chose to, to regulatory review for a recommendation back to the council. And then you would schedule a regulatory review for, generally speaking, just prior to the next council meeting so that it can appear on the next agenda for consideration, if that's, but your decision is whether to refer it.
I'd make a motion to refer it to give all the parties a chance to speak on the topic.
We have a second.
One second.
Questions, comments? All's in favor? Opposed? Five, do I have five two, correct?
Yep, that's correct. Thank you guys very much. I'll see you in a few weeks.
All right. Tax increment funding or TIF request for the Phase Two Pankus Project Community and Economic Development Committee recommendation. Will Rich is gonna speak to this first?
Yes, so the Community and Economic Development Committee met on Monday, this last Monday, and in a four to two vote, six of the nine members were present. In a four to two vote, the recommendation, the recommendation was to forward with a positive, positive answer to the council. So four, four votes in the affirmative to, because they can only make a, a recommendation, they can't make an approval, so recommend, a recommendation of approval to the town council.
Okay.
It had, it had already gone through the planning board, and I was more under the impression that our vote was to present it, not so much recommend, but to let it go forward and have further discussion with the full council tonight.
Okay.
I believe the gentleman from Pankus Theater, please.
A good evening. So as Rich has mentioned, I'm here requesting a TIF agreement for our Phase Two, what will probably ultimately be the first phase of our new development efforts on our forty-four Middle Street extension property. We're specifically seeking a seventy-five percent tax abatement for a thirty-year term. There are two main reasons why that is the amount and the duration that we're asking for. The first is that main housing allocates points on its qualified allocation plan for its tax credit, its tax credit program based upon the TIF agreements that developers receive from local municipalities. And the maximum amount of points we can receive in that category is tied to the seventy-five percent tax abatement for the thirty-year term. The second reason is that the decreased property taxes that the site would pay ultimately does make the project more feasible. We, I spoke to Rich earlier today, and while this building, the, the hard cost is currently estimated to be fifteen million dollars, the current mill rate would set the property tax burden at around two hundred thousand dollars. The twenty-five percent tax arrangement, well, the seventy-five percent tax abatement would make the property tax for a fifty-million-dollar building twenty-five, I'm sorry, fifty-thousand dollars per year. So that additional one hundred fifty thousand in, well, the back of that one hundred fifty thousand in annual operating costs ultimately increases the amount of debt service we can take on to fund the actual construction of this project. So this project, I, I know it was a long time ago that planning board discussed it, but just to bring everybody back up to speed, it's a forty-unit project that will be all one bedrooms for seniors, which for this, for the tax credit program is fifty-five years and older. The rents are capped at fifty percent AMI and sixty percent AMI, there's a split in the units. We are aiming to receive a small allocation of project-based vouchers for this project, somewhere in the eight to twelve voucher range most likely. Much like the tax abatement, the project-based vouchers will ultimately make the project more feasible in that we collect a higher rent from those project-based vouchers than we do from the fifty and sixty percent units. So that increased rental revenue would increase the amount of debt service we're able to take on to fund the ultimate construction of the project. That is what, what I have. If there are any questions, any clarity that you guys would want?
So that's like four point five million over thirty years that would be abating taxes, sort of, roughly?
There's no abating of taxes.
What's the language?
The TIF is that if they pay a hundred percent of the taxes, seventy-five percent of them are returned to them, and the other twenty-five percent, I, I don't know what the terms of a TIF would be, that for the allowable uses of the funds that would actually be paid would be determined by what the TIF did. There are allowable expenses under a, under a TIF agreement, but this is a, a housing TIF, not the nor, we, we've never done a housing TIF. We've only done economic development-related, the mail, those kind of things. So under those considerations, we could, we had, and it has to be identified in the TIF at the time it's done, what the purposes of that revenue will be, because if you don't, there's no sheltering that value from impacting your required contributions from school funding and from the, the county tax. If, if you don't shelter the value under the TIF, meaning that you can't just use that fifty thousand to offset your regular expenses of your community. That's not, if, if you do this, that TIF funds unless you don't protect the value, I, unless you allow it to elevate the value of the community by that amount, which will impact your, your contribution to the county tax and will in, increase your contribution, your, decrease your school funding, those things, the higher your value goes, the other things come down. So that, that fifty thousand dollars can pay for something, but it's not gonna pay for police, fire, EMS, those things, that unless it's a capitalized something that's allowed under the TIF, but it's, it's not gonna offset taxation.
Did your organization receive the grant that our economic development director helped you with?
Yes.
And has that been implemented? Have those funds been spent and allocated to this property?
So that, the five hundred thousand dollars we're receiving from the state through the town is going to be used on rehabbing the existing housing. We haven't yet finalized a sub-契约 agreement. We have begun spending our own money towards the project. We've spent around, and some of this will and some of this won't count towards the cash match for that grant, because we're covering a one hundred thousand dollar cash match for that grant to get any CBG funding. There's a, whatever the award is, twenty percent has to be sourced, and we're covering that.
When does that grant expire?
We have a two-year period to spend it, the five hundred thousand. We can get a third-year extension if need be. We do wanna really start digging away at that.
When does, when does that grant expire?
I can't remember the exact date that we executed, well, that the town executed its agreement with the.
Define existing housing.
Hang on, I wanted that question answered first, and then we'll, when does the grant expire?
June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. The contract was approved October fourth of twenty twenty-four, excuse me. June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six is when that grant has to be finalized, with the opportunity for one, one-year extension.
And that's prior to, okay, that's my question. Council reps.
Okay. Define existing housing.
There are fifty-eight units on that property at this time.
You're talking the townhouses and? Look, you're talking the townhouses and Knoxview Apartments?
Yes, the townhouse and Knoxview Apartments, and my apologies, there's fifty-four units currently on the property.
Question I have is where have you been because? The fire that took place at Knoxview Apartment was years and years and years ago, because I was on the department and I was there that night. And there's been nothing done to date, which is kind of outstanding to me. It would say, the, the apartment has not been rebuilt and it's not been let out again. Over at the townhouses, I'll call them, up on Seminary Road. Those things are in a terrible state of disrepair. I drove through there again tonight just to. Do a little sanity check with myself and. I'm, I'm struggling with all this going by and, and nothing having been done up there, but. Let, let me keep going on if you don't mind a little bit. I, I did a lot of reading on this and. I agree with everything that our town manager, uh, said about where this money could be used and so forth, but in addition to that. The, uh. In all this mail we get from Maine Municipal Association, there's a, a bill in the hopper, this is. Dated the end of February, February twenty-eight, LD four thirty-eight. An act to allow municipalities to limit nonprofit prof, nonprofit property tax exemptions. Sponsored, sponsored by a rep from Waldo, the bill authorizes municipalities to limit the value of a property tax exemption. Extended to a nonprofit institution or organization, provided the governing body determines by vote. That granting an exception is detrimental to the residents of the municipality. And that's really where I want to go tonight. What we're proposing here is not limited to the townspeople of Bucksport. This will be open up to the entire county. If they don't meet their occupancy requirements, it will go outside of the county. The, all of us in this room that are homeowners and business owners and so forth, we've taken a, um. A sizable increase in our property taxes. To me, a seventy-five percent abatement for thirty years is a difficult pill to swallow. This is a fifteen million, one-five million dollar project. That equates to, when you do all the numbers, I agree with you, it'll be about a fifty thousand dollar. Revenue to the town. That does not cover the cost of a. Uh, paramedic fighter fighter. The units that you're proposing to build, forty units for fifty-five and over. Theoretically, that could be eighty people in a three-story building, based on the drawings you presented. The other piece, the other phase of the, 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 the building process would be. Uh, fifteen, as I recall from my notes, fifteen one-bedroom unit apartments, that's potentially another. Thirty people, so we're looking at just north of a hundred people. Uh, coming in over here, and to me, the numbers just don't work in terms of revenue to the town and the strain. That is going to be put on the, uh, public safety departments to accomplish this, so. I think I'm done, but anyway, that's my, that's the burr under my saddle right now.
Can I address some of those points? So the building that we're talking about right now, the forty-unit apartment building, um, it is basically a rubber stamp copy. Of two buildings that we recently, recently, um, I would say. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, I believe was when they were placed in service, um, two, two buildings in Bangor. So we have seventy-nine units, basically the same exact structure as what we're building here, but two different buildings. Um, those seventy-nine units have a total of eighty-three occupants at this time. Most senior apartment units, um, this is from my experience in the affordable housing field and is. Mirrored by the experience of our property manager, most senior apartment units are ultimately occupied by single-member households. It's just a function of the different eligibility requirements. Um, it's just not common that you see those units occupied by two-member households, um. Regarding the fifteen unit, it's actually an eighteen-unit building is what we got approved for phase one. Looking at that building and, um, well, we intended to apply for funding through the main housing rural housing program. For that particular building. They subsequently changed how they evaluate different projects for the, the scoring for that particular project. Um, and I, I think it makes sense for us to take a step back on that one, based on how Main Housing is now grading. Applications for that program and come up with something that, uh, better meets the community needs. Along with the scoring criteria of that program, so right now, right now, there is eighteen one-bedroom units approved and the forty units approved. I really think that that eighteen-unit project, we need to take a step back. Bring up a different plan, go to planning board for that one, make sure it meets the needs of the community and also scores better for that program. There was one other point I just wanted to make real quick, I'm sorry. I checked with, um, Penobscot County Dispatch, um, ahead of Monday night's meeting. The seventy-nine units that we have in Bangor are very similar financial makeup. They, their nine-one-one call, uh, the nine-one-one line from those buildings. And so this doesn't include non-nine-one-one phone calls, they get less than four phone calls per month.
When we discuss, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you first.
When we, when we discussed this before it went to economic development and other. The, the, um, income limits was low income. Is that, did I, did I misunderstand? There was, that was part of this discussion and now I'm confused.
That was higher than.
For, for the forty units, we are going to utilize the low-income housing tax credit, so that is. Buildings funded by the low-income housing tax credit are typically split between fifty percent AMI units and sixty percent AMI units. For a one-member household, the fifty percent AMI, um, threshold, um. Cap on income is thirty-one thousand dollars per year, and for a sixty percent AMI household. One-member household is thirty-seven thousand dollars per year. There will be, we're, we are hoping to receive some project-based vouchers for this building as well, so. There will, there will be some households that are in a lower income bracket. But to, to be eligible to live in those non-project-based voucher units, the household has to have income of around, of at least around forty percent. Of the rents.
There's an age limit?
Yeah, so it would be limited to households that are fifty-five and older. The project-based vouchers, based on how. The wait lists for that program work, those units. Uh, household has to be sixty-two years or older or have a disability in order to. Receive the voucher based on preferential placement. It's very rare that you would see somebody below the age of sixty-two unless they have a disability, get one of those project-based vouchers.
I just have a question, I, it's not related to the TIF conversation, but I am a little bit concerned about. Like, the capacity to keep these units good and safe for tenants. I, I, I lived close to that one too, and I was alarmed to see the, the, the state of those.
I, yes, no, I completely understand, and I think it's important to look at how we got where we got with the existing housing on that property. So the existing housing is what we refer to as a NOAA, Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. It was built in nineteen seventies using. Mechanisms from HUD, financing from HUD that no longer, uh, no longer exist. It was deregulated. It was owned by individuals that really passed on a lot of deferred maintenance to us. We are in the process of catching up on that deferred maintenance. We've spent around eighty thousand so far into. Um, improving the conditions of those apartments. There is still a long way to go. The CDBG grant will be a, a big help in getting those units where we want them to be.
Do you have the capacity to do that and that is kind of where I'm getting at?
Yes, yeah.
We want to serve our tenants first.
Absolutely. So where we'd be looking at timeline-wise is, um, if, if everything were to line up, we would be breaking ground. On the new building, um, at the start of the twenty twenty-seven construction season, it's very difficult to. See a pathway to an earlier construction start date, and that is if everything lines up perfectly.
Isn't that after the grant expires?
Right, so we'd be looking at being done with the grant when breaking ground on this project.
And how long, how much longer do, when do you anticipate the grant work being completed?
We want to start publishing RFQs for the major work for that project this coming quarter.
Rich, can.
Will that, will that, we have that, that five hundred thousand dollars, won't we have that?
Yeah, oh, no, I, I, no, you're, you're not wrong about that. It, five hundred thousand dollars is gonna go by in, in a flash.
I thought that was heat pumps to change heating systems.
Heat pumps is a component of what we're trying to do with that grant money. Um, ultimately, we're looking at other, um, possible routes to re-capitalize the site. I personally think the seminary building itself would be a good opportunity for another tax credit deal with the state. Um, just to bring in additional capital to really bring that building up to where it needs to be, and then. The family townhouse units, we have other ideas of how we can bring more capital to that site. To bring those units up to our standards. Those units, they're not at the standards that we want our apartments to be. This phase two will be a completely new building. Um, monitored by Main Housing, a component of the tax credit deals is a mandatory. Um, reserve fund, we will be required to put a certain amount of money every month into, or every year. Into a replacement reserve. They actually underwrite different capital expenses when looking at these projects. They, Main Housing has a lot of control over the apartment after it's built to make sure that it's meeting. Um, their standards, um, it's subject to different inspections. They don't play around with their tax credit developments as far as making sure that whoever builds it is maintaining the property.
How long is that relationship? Is it the whole thirty years?
I actually believe some of the financing that Main Housing provides to make the project work. Results in a forty-five-year, um. A forty-five-year use restriction, um, but a bare minimum, it would be thirty years for the tax credits.
But following that, the ownership model would be non-taxable, correct?
Base, yes, and, and so that's one of the reasons why the thirty-year term often makes sense for municipalities, because. In the situation where the property shifts to a nonprofit ownership that is tax-exempt, that thirty-year TIF, that thirty-year TIF continues.
This doesn't sound like the proposal that we were given when all this was presented to us a year and a half ago. Sounds like you guys have changed quite a bit.
This, well, the forty units was always going to be a low-income housing tax credit project. Uh, this is the first time that we've brought the TIF forward.
And the change of ownership, was it your plan to sell out to a different organization?
So the, the way that the tax credit works is we enter into a partnership with a tax credit investor. We are the general partner. Of that limited partnership. The tax credit investor capitalizes tax credits. We're a nonprofit, we can't capitalize on tax credits. After fifteen years, the tax credit investor exits and we become the sole owner of the, uh, building.
Couple of questions. Cause I, I seem to remember it differently as well. And I'm looking at the, the map that was, the map that was presented to us when we met several years ago on this, and I see Penobscot Place with the forty units. And Bucksport Village Apartments with the eighteen units, and I welcome you to correct my, what I remember. I remember that the forty pla, Penobscot Place with the forty units was intended to be work, workforce housing. That was the word that was used, um, a lot then. As a matter of fact, the, the word that, the words that weren't used then. It, um, almost to a point were low income. Bucksport Village Apartments, the eighteen units, um, were. Uh, projected to be more of a senior housing of people of middle to higher income. And the reason that I'm confident that I'm remembering it correctly is because when I look at that map and I see where the hit, I remember talking about the ADA, um. Uh, considerations that needed to be put into Bucksport Village Apartments, the eighteen unit. And as I'm looking at that map right now, um, all of the handicap parking spaces are in front of that unit. And there are no handicap spaces in front of Penobscot Place. So I, 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 I want to make sure that we're, that we're talking about, that we're talking about the same thing. And the other thing that I want to make sure that we're talking about in terms of the same, making sure that we're on the same page is this. Well, there's a number of things. I want to give you a chance to answer that question, and I want to come back to a couple of other questions that have been asked, including. What the status, the, the actual status is of the apartments inside of the Knoxview Building. Let's start there, but I do have an additional question from there.
So in the, the eighteen-unit building, we were looking to fund through the rural housing program, and that has an income limit of. Eighty percent AMI, so that would be the one that you might consider workforce. The forty units, we always anticipated using the low-income housing tax credit. If that was miscommunicated, I apologize.
Why are the handicap parking spots in front of the other one then?
I would really honestly just credit that to the fact that those are early drawings. For a planning board versus the full design before we break ground.
Well, is that what the planning board approved? If that's what the planning board approved.
I would presume so, but I don't know if the location of the handicap parking is something that would have been considered by the planning board.
I, I do not remember. Low income or vouchers being mentioned ever. It was specifically workforce housing and senior housing.
That's my recollection as well, so.
And I, I want to be clear, I'm not coming after low-income housing. This is not, this is not me sitting here saying. My intention either, but. This is just, this is a change, that, we are talking about something different.
And I, I think for citizens to understand, it's not, it's, the need in Bucksport is grocery store clerk housing. It's, it's sort of.
That was part of the equation.
Middle income is a huge need.
So, okay, I guess my other question, and, and I, I, I won't worry about Knoxview right now, um, except the fact that it. It isn't done. Is the holdup on the, so what's, I believe you referred to it as the sub-tenant agreement, there's a holdup, what's the holdup on that?
I'll be completely honest, we recently, well, we still haven't gotten the full CO, but we recently cut the ribbon. On forty-one units of supportive housing in Bangor. I did not anticipate the closing months of that project being. Nearly as time-intensive as they subsequently turned out to be.
The grant program, that, the funding they're applying for requires twenty-five percent of the units to be. Project-based, that's, it's the funding source that's dictating that piece, so in this building, it would be ten, ten units would have to be project-based. And project base follows the building, not the person, so, um.
Well, it's not necessarily a requirement of the tax credit project, it's really coming down to the feasibility of actually being able to.
Oh, okay.
Afford getting the building built is the additional rental revenue that we would receive from the project-based voucher units relative to the fifty or sixty percent.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Has, has our economic development director been of resource to you? Has he been helpful?
Extremely.
Extremely helpful. Well, I feel like the town of Bucksport has extended you a major resource by letting you. Use our economic development director to help you with this process, and I think the town should see some of those results before we give you anymore.
I gotta be, sorry. I, I guess I would agree, and, and it, it prob, you're probably standing there feeling like we're coming after you, and, and I, I probably should speak to that. Because I do remember the conversation from before. And I gotta tell you what this feels like, and I'm pretty straight, so, uh, let me, let me tell you what this feels like. This feels like that you've recognized that there are holes in this model. And it feels like that now you've decided to change course. And quite frankly, I'm not going to mince words, it feels like that in order to accommodate you changing course. That Bucksport is going to, you're asking Bucksport to take part in a TIF in order to allow you to change that course. And I don't know how I could justify that to anybody on the street tomorrow. I don't know how I could justify that to one taxpayer in this community that asks me tomorrow on the street. Why in the world are we doing this? What, why didn't we get to the bottom of what has changed between two years ago when this conversation started and now? And why in the world would we agree to this? I don't know if you're going to be able to answer that this evening, but I'm, I'm pretty confident hearing the, the conversation, that we're going to have to get to the bottom of it before we move forward on this.
So.
I, I agree, I think, I think it's definitely needs more discussion. I, I agree, I think, I think it's definitely needs more discussion. We're desperate for housing in Bucksport, desperate for housing. But it feels, there's just so much up in the air unknown to.
And if my perception is incorrect, I, fine, but you're gonna have to persuade me that something is different here. And I'm not trying to play gotcha, but I'm sitting here looking at a map with a building that I know we talked about as being where the senior, where it, the, the theoretical conversation was see, upper to, to, um, middle to upper-income senior citizens. I know that was the conversation and I'm looking at a map where all the handicap parking spots are in front of that building. You, you're going to have, to, to, to persuade me that I, with something that I'm.
I really think the location of the handicap spots on that drawing are more or less happenstance because even if this building, the forty units, was not a low-income senior building, there would still have to be handicap spots in front of it. I just don't think.
Why aren't there any in front of the other building?
The, the forty-unit building? I just don't think they're depicted on the drawing that you're looking at. They, the building would have to have handicap parking, no matter what income bracket or age group it served. I, I apologize if there's any misunderstanding, but.
Well, I mean, it goes beyond that, I mean, the, the four of us that were at that, those meetings have come away with a different interpretation than what you're presenting here. I mean, we thought something different, I mean, I think every one of them.
This was not, again, I am not being negative about low-income housing. What I am saying is that this was not the conversation. And now the conversation appears to have changed and it appears that the request is that the taxpayers of Bucksport foot the bill for that change. That there's a gap in the model between what was initially presented in today and now we're being asked to foot the bill. If I have that incorrect, somebody better do a better job at, at proving me incorrect. That's all I am saying here, and I'm, I will be more than willing to say that I'm wrong. But I've heard nothing to indicate that that's not the case here. The words "low income" were not used prior to, in, in any conversation I've been part of, prior to tonight. And I hadn't heard them until I watched last night's economic development meeting.
Well, and, and to speak to that, I mean, on social media, there was a skewer of what was perceived and I, for one, was saying, no, that wasn't the case. Cause that was my perception of it, was, it was not.
I, I wanna sort of say, you don't wanna negatively talk about low-income housing. Low-income housing has historically less problems, or the same or better problems as any income level of housing. So, this is not to sort of disenfranchise low-income units or anything. As much as just Bucksport's identified need for housing is not like that sort of bucket. We have a lack of housing for folks who don't qualify for project-based vouchers. And that's just, that stems from sort of our work with comprehensive plan and other things. So, our challenge are people who aren't qualifying for project-based vouchers, that's sort of my concern. But, because pretty, you know, we, we don't have enough housing stock for folks who aren't eligible for those types of apartments either.
But the structure wasn't the model when we discussed this either. A tax-exempt status thirty years from now was not on the table when this got presented to us.
Yeah, I'd never heard of it.
The structure, regardless of who occupies anything, this structure was not the format that was presented to us.
And we really didn't have any, when we bring a project to planning board, we, we don't really necessarily have one hundred percent of an understanding of all the different sources that are gonna be brought in to the project. So, it really wasn't something that at that time we were ready to come seeking a TIF agreement.
So, what you're saying is there could be another model that comes along that won't require the TIF agreement? In theory, I mean, just like this is, we could wait for something along those lines as opposed to a TIF?
They don't all require a TIF, it's a point system and the TIF gives Panquist, puts, positions Panquist more competitive, more competitively. There, it's not required of it, so, somebody else could be doing this same funding source and not use a TIF.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need clarification on two things.
Can I just clarify one thing, and I don't mean to interrupt, but re- really quick, the way this grant program works and of course, there's two different people that we've dealt with. Jason Byrd, who the council had an executive session with. Now, it's only the council and town manager who are privy to that conversation, so we don't know what came from that, myself included. Um, and, and then Peter, who's handling the financial aspect. But, for this grant that they're seeking, because we are Bucksport, they start in a hole of zero. If this project was proposed in Bangor, they start at, at a ten because of the MHI that, that you deal with there. So, to try to get points, the reason asking for the TIF, if they, if they, if they compare against Bangor and Bangor says, yes, we'll do this TIF there, out of a hundred-point scoring scale, they can only max out at eighty-seven. And then the competitive grant round, eighty-seven versus a hundred, so that's why the TIF discussion's coming up. Town can say, no, we don't want a TIF, they can still go forward. They're starting at eighty-seven for max score, Bangor's starting at a hundred.
And just for the benefit of everybody in the room, can you clarify what A, uh, AMI is so that we, cause I think that could get lost?
Yes, uh, average, median income, so.
It's because our median income is higher that, it's not because the people don't like Bucksport. It, I'm not being snobby.
No, no, you're right, it's why Bucksport cannot apply for a CDVG grant. It's why Panquist had to do a survey work on that area. So, for example, I tried to help the school district get one, Bucksport didn't qualify. So, then I said, well, it's a school district, let's get the four towns, the four towns didn't qualify. So, about a month later, Panquist, um, I'm introduced to Peter from Jason and they, I said, Bucksport doesn't qualify, you'll have to need to take your zone and you'll need to take a survey of what your tenants' median income is. And the zone is attached there. So, when you talk TIFs, there are two different TIFs. There's an ATIF, A-H-T-I-F, an affordable housing TIF, which is what comes with this type of grant. And then a more traditional grant that the council would be as a municipal TIF, sort of like what we had proposed for Whole Oceans. Now, an ATIF differs from the municipal TIF because there's a lot less that you can do as a community with the ATIF. It's basically project-based. No businesses are allowed to be on that property. Twenty-five percent has to, uh, no more than twenty-five percent can go to anything other than the housing. You could do anything in there that is related to the housing, like a childcare facility that Panquist would run, or, um, I don't know, like an outdoor basketball court or something, or, or a trail system in there. And, and that's basically there. Now, outside, you can do your public safety, but only based off of a percentage of the impact that it would have out there. Versus a regular TIF with, it comes for economic development, um, marketing and advertising of the town. Um, it also has the public safety aspect, but is more with the municipal TIF than there is with an ATIF. But, again, we've had different conversations with different people at the planning board, which I was a member of, at both. Jason Byrd and Peter were at both, and the executive session again was Jason. So, just for some clarity there. And I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
No, I, I have a.
I thought you might.
Clarification for you.
Okay.
From you. When we talked about this, Council Bishop asked, brought up the fact that we would like a form signed for, for an agreement to protect the town of Bucksport. Correct?
Yes.
And we all supported it, I believe?
Yes, I believe that's.
Is that signed?
That's the TIF that we're, that's the paperwork waiting to have signed. So, no money has exchanged hands. So, a hundred thousand, essentially, we've talked, and about eighty thousand dollars of work has been done. It's hard to differentiate on their behalf, here, not in front of a computer, of how much of that eighty thousand has gone into work. When I had the news stations come into town, I was physically up at the site and physically saw a few pickup trucks. I think I mentioned that either at council meeting or somewhere that I, I seen coming out of apartments and the back of pickup trucks, refrigerators, stoves, and those came directly from the last two, um, townhouses. So, um, so that, I've never been inside, I don't know. I did drive up today with my intern so he could understand kind of, you know, what we're looking at, what we're discussing. And, um, I, I noticed some things up there that, okay, you know, the fences in the spot is torn down and storm-related, maybe, whatever, um, who knows? But, um, that agreement that Council Bishop had asked for was drafted, was sent over. I got additional help from other municipalities who've done housing tips, cause I, uh, to me, housing CDVG grants, cause I had never done one, so, I seek, sought out help to do that and then created the document. Other things is that there's a housing committee as well that's, that had to be formed. Counselor here is the council and town representative on that as well, so.
We haven't met.
Yeah, but, but the document has been drafted and had been sent over, um, for review. The young lady, and I apologize, I can't remember her name. She had emailed and said that she was no longer gonna be working for Panquist because I had also been working with her. So, I left it as that it was organizational and.
How long ago was that?
It's gotta be somewheres around the new year.
We did lose, um, our finance analyst from our department. We're in the process of finding somebody else and that has had some impact on our ability to move forward with the sub-recipient agreement.
Cause that, in my mind, that's extremely important, cause that was kind of agreed upon.
Ye- yes, and, and, and no payouts or anything can happen without that sub-recipient agreement coming back. So, and again, um, Peter and, and I apologize, I can't remember her name, I deal with a lot of people on a daily basis, but, um, they, they had, they have the agreement, they've recognized they have the agreement. And I have emails that recognize that, we know that the agreement hasn't been done. So, I haven't been asked for money, I have been asked by the state, why haven't you? But we haven't gotten requests, so.
All right.
Because the state has to do, um, main, uh, DECD, um, the Office of Community Development, OCD, has time frames when you need to get requests in because we have to meet X, Y, Z deadline, year and fiscal year and, right? So, I, I, um, CC'd on those emails as well.
So, would, if the deadline isn't met, will that negatively impact us to the town of Bucksport?
If, if this grant isn't expended?
Correct.
Yes, it does not look good on the town. If you get a grant and you do not, any grant we get that we do not follow through with, and that's any community, it does, it does not look good, your chances of getting a grant again, what would you say, the four-point-one-million-dollar grant, there's a reason why I'm here on Fridays. It's, it's getting done, because I don't wanna personally be the one to interrupt the town ever getting money again from the congressional delegates, so.
I make a motion, we deny this request.
Second.
Can I?
You, go ahead.
Uh, my, I, I can't vote, and that's not it. My, the only question related to.
For, for public comments too, or?
Yeah, yeah, I will, just a moment, yep.
Back to the, the Knoxview existing system that we got the grant for. You mentioned, um, that you were considering looking for a tax credit or something in return, in regard to, um, completing that project. And I, I think that that some of the concern that I've heard, not just from here, but from people in the community is that you haven't finished the first thing and you want to do the second thing. And the first thing is in a stage that's not, I made a number of calls last year, last summer to Jason with complaints that we received about the property and its condition and the bus not being able to go there and those kind of things. And was assured that thi- this was, uh, going to be addressed and we're heading into another construction season and it doesn't sound like that property is going to be materially changed by the end of this year either. Maybe I'm too linear, but you start and then move on to the next. But we've started, but now this request is for, I, I can't imagine people who live in those units seeing new construction happening next door when their stuff isn't done, would think that this was an equitable situation. I don't know how else to, you know what I mean? You can build forty new ones over here, but you can't fix the ones that were already.
I still need one clarification, since in layman's terms, it's, if we get a thirty-year TIF, twenty, so we only get twenty-five percent of what we should, and then after thirty years, correct me if I'm wrong, but if at any time those are voucher apartments, after that thirty year, we have a zero taxation situation, correct?
That's correct.
But only ten apartments are voucher, or only twenty-five percent of the forty-unit proposal.
Are required to be.
Are required to be voucher.
But more could be.
Right, yeah, do you have a sense of?
So, are Bangor properties that are of similar style to this, around a quarter of the tenants have housing choice vouchers? I don't know how that would be impacted by having place-based vouchers in this building, but it's around twenty-five percent.
But that would be a trust handshake on our part that maybe in thirty years we'll get something.
No, they would, no, it would be tax-exempt.
If there's any vouchers in the building, is the way I understand it, that it would be tax-exempt, correct?
No, vouchers are not.
They're not tied.
It would be owned by a nonprofit.
So, it's tax.
If anything, a project-based voucher in a situation where you have a taxable property of affordable housing, a project-based voucher contract would likely increase the assessed value relative to it just being fifty percent and sixty percent AMI units. The assessor would be able to look at the increased rental revenue and the capitalization of that to determine the assessed value.
Okay, matter of housekeeping, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm gonna ask the council if there are any questions. Ask the public if there are any questions or comments. Mr. D'Vanzo.
Thank you, my name is Joseph D'Vanzo, I'm the resident seventh-spring street of Bucksport. I'm also happy to be on the Council Economic Development Committee. And that night, there were certain concepts, uh, one, I'm held speaking also for Mr. Dick Peterson, whom.
I'm gonna ask that you speak for Mr. Joe D'Vanzo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Uh, that night, uh, through the presentation, nowhere was it mentioned that the original concept brought before the planning board was for wage work apartments. And this is supposed to bring people into town who was, who worked and who could spend money and sup- help support the town. Join, eh, all, all that was mentioned was, and it wasn't mentioned tonight, one of them was the elderly, low-income, and section eight, I didn't hear the word "section eight" to- tonight, but, uh.
That's not true.
That's not true, okay. We just got rid of, uh, the Spring Fountain Motel. I'm not against anybody either, since, uh, for the last nine years, I do a assistance program for the five towns here. Allin and Bucksport, Verona, everything. So, I was many times into the, uh, Spring Fountain Motel dealing with people there. If we're gonna put those peop- that type of setup up there, property values are gonna go down, they have to. These people were, they can't expect them, it's not a prison, they're not gonna stay in those apartments, they're gonna go out. They're either gonna go down to the bull field or they go down to the waterfront and hang out there. Now, I, I don't know, uh, maybe they could be agreed if when the ships come in, but I ask specifically, are we gonna be taking in the people, the homeless people from Bangor? And right away, it was no, no, we're not gonna deal with Bangor, I heard Bangor mentioned a lot tonight. It's, it's a difference. So, what I don't understand is that the concept that was brought before the planning board was thrown out by Panquist, yet they never re-approached, even mentioned the original concept to the Economic Development Committee. They're two specific, different concepts. And I can't believe that Panquist didn't know that. And I don't know if they, was there a way to get in and afterwards change it, or if they just lost track of it? But to me, uh, that threw everything off at the planning, at the meeting the, the other night. And I'm not, I was one of the ones who had my hand up halfway, so it was because of me that it went three to, four to two. But was under the impression, as Paul said, that we were going to be discussing, not that we approved it, but it would be discussed tonight amongst the town council, not that we wanted to see a, a direct go-ahead. Okay, uh, I also have been up there and to the, uh, it's one step away from a slum, certain, certain buildings. You can see the fences in the front are down, all the paint, all the stain is falling off there. Children will live there with bicycles and yet it's falling apart. Children will live there with bicycles and yet it's falling apart, I asked specifically asked that night who's in charge of taking and isn't Panquist white, he said, no, we have a management company. That doesn't answer my question because the management company supposedly works for you, aren't you keeping track of your property, obviously no one was. And we just looking to increase that? And as taxpayer within Bucksport, I really don't like what I'm hearing for that area, I thought it was supposed to be wage work and it's been changed, and I think if it wants to go that way, fine, but I think it, and it should be represented to the planning board as what they are presenting here. Cuz, well, cuz the planning board did not approve what's being pre- pre- presented here. It would didn't approve what was presented at the meeting the the other night, that was just slipped in. That's like saying, well, we have that property across street, they're gonna put up uh apartments and and instead we work up one day and they're putting a Burger King or a gas station. And he said, well, you gave us the right to build there, but we said this, but well, so what, we were changing it to this. It it has to be explained in a more positive manner, would have to be written, but in a way that we can understand and as it's I asked that night, the last thing I'll say, what happens if Panquist goes away? Who are we gonna be dealing with, if we're dealing with the state, the county, and if they want more section eight or vouchers, does that gonna become totally that? Uh, there's a questions which I would like answered, and I don't hear any answers to them, that's all I want to say.
Sure, yep, um, I'm gonna, council here, then Mr. Otto.
I just feel a need to defend our low income citizens and citizens who have experienced homelessness in our town. Uh, we've worked in this field for twenty five years and experienced folks without housing to be um for the most part doing the best they can responsibly, that's not, I don't support this TIF. But I just feel a need to defend our citizens who are experiencing homelessness in our town and who are low income, doing the best they can. Um, I just felt a need to.
I agree with you.
To say that publicly.
Yep, I agree with you, at least for me, I'm only speaking for me, cap, uh, Rich.
And thank you for that, Tracy, and and great job Monday night, so what we do need to be clear on are the roles of the planning board and the Economic Development Committee. The planning board approves the plans for the building, I can come and tell you as the planning board, I am planning to do a housing project and the houses are gonna cost six hundred thousand dollars, I'm not gonna tell you who's gonna live in those houses. Now, uh, or what they're gonna make, now I am gonna come and and tell you at this apartment project that we're gonna do of, our plan is to do a forty unit, an eighteen unit first, a forty unit, and then there's a phase three and a phase four, but right now step one, December twenty twenty three, we approve a eighteen unit. And I as well remember, eh, like you folks, that it was supposed to be for the eighteen unit was going to be the fifty five and older with um the the accessibility to start there um due to the special type of grant that the state of Maine had at that point, so here, neither here nor there, the reason why it came to Economic Development Committee before it came to the town council is because Panquist had a change of plans, the change of plans were brought to me um and and a couple others, and we spoke about it and thought that it was only right that it come to the Economic Development Committee prior to it coming to the town council. Prior to the vote, I stumbled on my words a couple times, but said because of the timing of the Economic Development Committee and for the timing of the council, that this item was already on the town council meeting for Thursday night. You are voting either in favor of supporting the TIF or not. You need to have at least four votes, which is same here. And if it's a three three, dependent on the way that the question was worded, however, if you were against it and it was a three three tie, that means it would be a favor for, it's clearly stated out and it's throughout the meeting, so. I just wanna be clear that Panquist did come forward prior to coming to the council with a change of plans. The fact that it's so quick is due to timing to getting grants in, if the council doesn't want to approve the TIF forty nine thousand six hundred seventy five dollars and fifty cents is what the tax increment financing is. That's a fact, those are all facts, but the fact that we're saying it did not come, it came to the Economic Development Committee on Monday and came to the council as quick as possible on Thursday, if I had enough notice and enough reason to believe that other things were going to change, trust me, it's my job to provide you with the facts and the committee and the public with the facts. We did that and brought it here, so I just wanna make sure that everything is laid on the table, that it did follow the path to get it to the right place and that people were told, and if we rewatch the video, they were told what they were voting on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any other questions or comments? As a ma- matter of housekeeping, this council's rules are that motions, because I'm are made in the affirmative, yep.
That is correct, I'll just send my previous motion.
Who's seconded?
Second.
We're to re- can we vote to uh approve the rescission of that motion? All is in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, chairman will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to entertain the proposal. Uh, line seven, uh subsection E.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any additional questions, all is in favor? Opposed, upstate, thank you. Next, uh, resolve twenty twenty five dash four two approving a memorandum of understanding between the town of Bucksport and Hancock County Habitat for Humanity. Let's approve. Second. Moving secondly, questions or comments?
This is what was brought forward to you last time for, to see if you um do this with just Habitat and it follows the same terms as the up, the up, you got one um proposed M O U that was incorrect, that included Bucksport Bay Health and Communities at a five hundred, this second one that you got last time was just Habitat for Humanity, a seven fifty cap of the of funding for the year is fifteen thousand dollars included in the upcoming budget.
Can I just?
Please, yeah, it's open.
Oh. The typo of the other organization is still on the today's packet, so that needs to be amended to exclude H C C.
We're still referring, so we were looking
Oh, I see.
What happens with those referrals?
I see, I apologize.
That's okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions, public? All is in favor, opposed, thank you. Resolve twenty twenty five dash four three approving the fire department's uh C I P expenditure request in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars for the purchase of mobile computers.
Motion approved, second.
Motion is a second, questions or comments? From the public, all is in favor, opposed, thank you. We have no resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections that I am aware of this evening. Um, however, under approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds, um, we have one uh for James and Heidi Cassidy, map zero three two lot zero nine one. A tax lien discharge uh from June the twenty eighth of twenty twenty three, how the council like to proceed?
Motion approved, second.
Questions, all in favor, opposed, thank you. Town managers report.
Um, Assistant Manager Grant, Finance H I Director Wilson and I have continued to work on the twenty five, twenty six budget and will be providing with a first draft the first week in April with the first budget meeting scheduled for the second Thursday in April. I am pleased to note that Finance H I Director Rachel Wilson recently had an article published in the quarterly publication of the Maine Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association. I'm also happy to announce that she has completed all necessary classes and training to receive certification from that organization, which has been a many year process for her, so congratulations to Rachel.
Agreed.
We are in the process of scheduling contract negotiations with our three unions whose contracts expire at the end of the fiscal year. And it is anticipated that these should be done before the end of March. Despite repeated attempts to contact several property owners whose properties are in foreclosure for unpaid property taxes, I have received no response. The law for dealing with property tax foreclosures has changed and we now have to have appraisals for properties prior to taking action and I now lo- allow longer to find a buyer that may meet the appraisal amount. Any amount received over and above the town's tax sewer legal and administrative costs goes back to the defaulted owner at the time of sale. Given the intricacies of the new statute, I would like permission to do a request for proposals for a real estate agent to handle any foreclosures that the town council chooses to pursue, a number of communities have taken have gone in this direction because of the fact that um while there's a percentage involved associated with that, they go through all the processes necessary to do that. Um, and if you are are willing to entertain that, I'll put it on the next agenda for permission to do an uh R F Q.
Any objections?
None.
I'd like to have a discussion about that, just have everyone just prepared about the lines of uh conflicts of interest. But also effectiveness to serve us well in in that process, so just so we can all think about that moving forward.
I have a meeting next week at the person from Maine Maritime Academy who was part of a group doing a P F A study of areas of the Knobscott River, according to their research, P F A concentrations in some areas near the former mill site are higher than in other areas of the river, I don't have any further information than that right this minute, but we'll be meeting with her next week to discuss what this research what has comprised this research and what additional research they may be doing to determine source, and I mention it because the, if they've been doing it near the outfall, that where the uh landfills outfall is that that may be very good information.
Well, it could be, yep.
To have, so I'll keep you posted. Um, and the M D O T traffic light replacement project scheduled is cos- scheduled for construction in twenty twenty six and is seeking public comment on the project at this time, people can provide commentary by going to reach dot Maine dot P M P I M A dot com, um. There's a, there are a number of flyers also circulating on social media that where you can just click on a button rather than so, but eh, that traffic light which has been a bone of contention for ten years, been here and how well or how poorly it it regulates traffic coming in from all the directions, it's, it's insides are antique, it doesn't have any special abilities and so that can't operate like some of the newer ones, but as of twenty six, it will be able to, I I won't be the manager then, but I will come back just to see that traffic light because it is in the summer.
Saturday morning.
Right.
We'll get the phone calls from everyone, but anyway, that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Sue, any questions for the town manager? Alright, uh, next is set public hearings and or hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits, and we do not have any this evening. Um, discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public, I'm gonna start with the council really quickly, um, I have a very quick one. I know we've all got our goals in, I appreciate that, and um on our next meeting, I um will have, will have it on the agenda to discuss those, um, I know that's a a meeting short, but I want, I don't wanna rush anything along those lines, so um, I'll, I'll firm that up with Sue, but next time we'll discuss our goals and go forward from there. I believe Councilor Rankin, you spoke to me before the meeting about.
Yep.
Yep, floor is yours.
Uh, I sent everyone a me- an email, I spoke with Rich about the feasibility and benef- being how beneficial it would be to do uh early in April to get, to advertise, put on our Facebook page to get as many volunteers as we can and make this an annual waterfront cleanup day from like nine to two on a Saturday or Sunday. Um, we could supply the food, so it'd be a little bit of expense, but minimal. And we could try to see if get the guns and hoses would come down and do the barbecue like at two o'clock at the end of the day. I easily think we could get fifty plus people and like Richard stated, we could break, break them up into teams and do areas of weeding, cleaning up, sweeping. Encourage people to bring the basic tools that we would need cuz we have some, but we don't, wouldn't have enough for everybody. And I'd like to put a name to it and make it a yearly thing to get the waterfront that initial up and going year. That was it.
Wonderful, what do, what would you need, what do we need to make that happen going forward, I know, I mean, in terms from an administrative standpoint?
We've, we've done every year, I make Bucksport beautiful, we've done that in May, if you would want it to convert it to a, at least for this year, to a waterfront cleanup, we can, like, rather than have one in May and one in April, we could have one eh, we, the one we've done in May, have done in May, we've, we've provided trash bags and given out ice cream coupons, but if we don't do that one and we do this one instead in April, we're, it's March thirteenth.
I know it's pushing it, but we wanna get the waterfront early in the year ready.
Eh, eh, I don't disagree with you at all, I I think that that push would help staffing that's gonna come on later on to to take care of it, um. Uh, Rich and I and Jacob can come up with a plan to define a date and see if guns and hoses can participate, and if not, what our alternatives might be for hot dogs and stuff on grills afterwards, you know, that kinda stuff, even if they can't, but we will the next council meeting is the twenty seventh, the twenty seventh, um. We'll try to distribute information prior to that meeting about a date and sort of how it would be, and then it would probably be maybe the second Saturday or in April, I don't know where that is in terms of sports activities or.
Yeah, the Wentworth Tournament, was that like the twelfth or something?
I believe this year it's the weekend of the uh, the night, I think it's on the eighteenth or nineteenth, but I could be wrong. Thought I remember seeing it was the.
Well, do you know, Rich?
Oh, yeah.
This guy might.
Last game of the day. Uh, the Wentworth Tournament is the nineteenth.
Okay.
Um, we both have home games on the twelfth, but the twenty sixth is open.
Maybe that's a better.
The nineteenth is a Saturday, correct?
Yes, those are all Saturdays, yeah.
Is the twenty sixth open, that's the end of April, but it's still.
It's the end of April, I think we should get through that one last snowstorm that just happens to hit us every April. Right, right before when they're supposed to do the streets to get abreast, but, no, no, we're done. And that, that would give the council one month to um to make a decision get us time some to publicize it and give the public safety a chance to see.
So we'll agenda it for the twenty sixth with a plan for April twenty sixth. The twenty seventh of this month will present a plan for this to occur on the twenty sixth of April.
Yeah.
Is that?
I think when, when we do advertise it, I think we should just give people a recommendation of if they want to bring tool of some sort, so people aren't showing up with, you know.
Airhans.
Three foot chainsaws.
Yes, we definitely don't need that.
Maybe a liability.
Killjoy.
However, we can definitely send them behind Irving cuz there's a lot of work that can be done there.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the council, thank you, Councilor Rankin, great idea. Any, let me go, from the public. Yes.
My name is Katrina Bishimer and I've lived on uh Town Farm Road for, since two thousand and three. I am obviously a taxpayer, I contribute to the community, I am a psychiatric nurse. I work on a geriatric psychiatric facility on on that type of unit in Bangor, the state hospital. I'm speaking now because I felt very frustrated earlier, I felt like the discussion around homeless people coming from Bangor, et cetera, is totally misinformed. And I, I can assure you that many people on my unit wind up homeless because of circumstances beyond their control. Spouses dying, Alzheimer's, you name it, and as a human being, I feel like as a community, we should have more um caring and our, our view of homelessness, people need, you need to examine it because it felt extremely judgmental and I was very offended, not by the council but by whoever stood up here and was talking, I can assure you. I can assure you, uh, this is how I've spent the last forty years of my life working in a psychiatric facility, whether it be a cardio hospital or a state hospital. These are human beings too, and I just implore people to think about people are human beings, and we do not have as much control as what we think, whether it be political, social, whether something happens in our family. We as a community should be standing up for all people, and I, I, I just needed to say that and get that out of my heart. Thank you.
Sure. Let me make sure that I clarify, I'm only speaking for me now. But let me make sure that I clarify what I believe the council was getting at, just so that we're, because I, I do appreciate, appreciate you speaking up. I just wanna be clear that, that I certainly was unhappy earlier this evening, and that was, and I know other people on the ca- council had some reservations. And that was not because of the fact that there is a potential for more low-income housing. It was because, quite frankly, expectations and what we had been told have really changed. And so I, 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 I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanna be very, very clear about that, that this is not an indictment on anyone. Other, and it's not even an indictment on what I'm about, what I'm, what I'm not happy about. What I'm not happy about is that expectations have changed. I think sometimes in that discussion, words might get twisted. I'm not trying to make excuses or defend anything. I, your point, I take wi- with, holds as much water as, as it possibly could, so.
Yeah, I, I under- I understood that part. I, I understood that the process had changed, that, that maybe what we were presented with, that the town was presented with had changed, and I get that piece. And that's not necessarily what I was reacting to.
Sure.
I was reacting to other statements.
Sure. And sometimes when you stand up here, it can be, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, but no, I appreciate you speaking up and, and your point is well taken, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman, I saw you getting ready to stand up.
That's fine. Uh, Ralph Chapman, uh, School Street, Bucksport. Last meeting, I made a comment, and, um, a, uh, Bangor Daily News reporter um, misstated what I said, and it created some confusion. Fortunately for me, the Bangor Daily News reporter did not identify me by name, but said a member of the public was concerned with a biofuels plant, because such plants involve burning municipal solid waste, and I did not say that. That's not true. It's uh, technically ridiculous. What I did say was that municipal solid waste was a recognized potential feedstock for a biofuels manufacturing plant. Very, the words are somewhat similar. A biomass energy plant takes in various types of material and burns it to create energy, like the per plant up in Orington used to. There were a couple biomass plants down east that had to close because of the Massachusetts Legislature made a decision that did not allow their electricity to be considered green electricity, which was commanding a higher price, and then so the price fell, so they shut down. There, those are biomass energy plants. What was being discussed last, at the last meeting, was a biofuels manufacturing plant, which is a different thing. That takes in feedstocks of various types and turns it into, uh, generally liquid fuel. Either, uh, there's a couple of biofuel manufacturing plants in the state already. There's one in Portland that sells, uh, a replacement for diesel, uh, fuel that's of varying grades of sourced material that's not petroleum. And then there's a project going in at, uh, up in Limestone that deals with the, uh, jet fuel manufacturing from biomaterials. Uh, and there's a place in Lincoln that's working on, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I just wanna make it clear that what was reported in the newspaper created a little bit of anxiety amongst, uh, people in town, because, uh, they thought that what was being discussed last time had to do with burning municipal solid waste. Sorry for the long explanation. Do you have any questions? More than happy to answer it for you. Just wanted to make that correction.
For the clarification. Anyone else? All right. We'll try to finish up, cause you know my theory. The, when you have a meeting like this, the, the difference between minute eighty-nine and ninety-one is huge, and we are past minute ninety-one. So, um, let's see, upcoming public hearings, destination of topics for committee assignment, and scheduling of committee meetings. I, um, believe I'm safe to assume that before the next meeting, we will be having a regulatory review meeting.
That's correct.
What time do we want that? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
That'll be next meeting, next Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
The twenty-seventh.
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 Yeah. I will not be here for that, just to give everyone a heads up, so.
Okay, so that's three twenty-seven at six P M.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll write a statement or something.
Absolutely. Any other committee meetings that we need to have? All right, leave it there for now. Uh, next item is executive session pursuant to one dash MR, uh, one MRSA, uh, cha- section four oh five, six A, uh, for personnel matter. I don't believe we are taking action coming out of this meeting, or others. We may be. We may be. Um, so you're welcome to stay if you'd like for that, uh, for that action, uh, we will be adjourning after that, if, even if we do take action.
Do you need them to stay? They can go. You don't need to go back live to the decision.